It's seven o'clock, we'll call the October 6th council meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call and roll please.
Mr. Crouch?
Here.
Mr. Watoski?
Here.
Mr. Payton?
Here.
Mr. McCrillis?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Any members of council?
No.
At this time, we will have a presentation from Marilyn Black. She's here to talk to us about our upcoming project on renovation of City Hall. Welcome Marilyn.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you.
Thank you. And I hope to get acquainted with some of the folks on council that I've previously met. Let me introduce myself by saying, the name is Marilyn Black. I'm retired now after more than 25 years with the Auto Regional Alliance, where I served as their vice president for heritage development and was their prime grants writer. In retirement, I happen to be the co-owner of Black Wolf Communications LLC. And it is in that context that I'm presenting a proposal from that firm to you for your consideration. It is related to an very important project that council has expressed significantly interest in, and that is working on the exterior rehabilitation of the City Hall building. And I know that you already have secured preliminarily your architectural services and the copy of the preliminary process that has been provided to you. Earlier this year, the grant officers for the State Historical Museum Commission and representatives of the city and I, they need to discuss that project and they toured the building as part of their initial input. What my firm is offering to you is grant writing services to help put together funding packages so that the net expenditure of your municipal funds is not the entire amount of that project. Two primary sources have been identified, and those are some of the grantors that we have had with preliminarily for you. And that is the State Historical Museum Commission, specifically their Keystone Historic Preservation Construction category. And also the Herald Heist Chairable Trust, which is a small chairable trust managed by PHMC. And it is only for certain preservation of certain historic buildings located in Crawford County. If those are the two grant applications that are sought, the proposal which has been shared with you in advance describes the hourly rates that Black Wolf would charge. And that is $50 per hour for professional services when it's work that I don't have to do on a specific day in a specific place for you. If our contract was underway and there was a specific meeting with other project partners or council members which you would need to attend, I would need to attend or which my husband, as the other member of the firm, would need to attend, that would be $70 an hour, but the vast majority of the work would be at a $50 rate. We're suggesting that because the deadlines for those two grants happen to be March 1st in the case of the PHMC grant application, and May 1st in the case of the Herald Heist Fund, we're suggesting a contract period of November 1st through the end of April, so a six-month time period. We're further suggesting that the compensation be capped at a total of $2,000. If an additional grant entity is identified along the way that you feel would be appropriate and after preliminary research we can scope that out, it could be as an additional of up to $800 for each additional other grant application. As I'm sure you realize in the field, many of the documents which are involved in doing the first one, you tend to be able to utilize in the others, especially because the first one is PHMC and they are one of the more stringent ones, both in terms of their criteria and also the documentation that they require. My husband's particular role will be in outdoor exterior photography. Fresh pictures will need to be taken and we would suggest that that occur not in the midst of winter. We can't show all of the features, but that would be the November period, which is why the month of November we're suggesting is the start. In the case of PHMC, in my previous job, I wrote four successful grant applications to that same category and managed those, and to make five to the Herald Heist, and managed those successfully. So the grantors are familiar not only with me, but more importantly, I'm familiar with their procedures, their preferences, and their review processes. The resumes for both my husband Darrell and myself were also attached as part of the proposal. And since you had that in advance, I'm going to pause here and see what questions there may be.
I'm good. Me too.
Okay, I'll make questions.
No, thank you.
Very much. Any or any big additions?
I have no questions. I know of the work that you've done in our community and I'm happy that you were willing to come in and present to us. Council will discuss this at a later date and I believe we could have it on our agenda next meeting.
Very good.
Okay.
And if additional questions come to mind, I will be favorable to balance of the meeting and if there's any clarifications that people have, just let me know.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting minutes of September the 15th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to accept those and place them on file?
So move.
Your second?
I'll second.
Call and roll please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Manager's report, Neil?
Yep, good evening council. A couple items here on the manager's report this week. The first being, just to let council know, Our Public Works has hired a new employee for the vacancy left by Skip Welling, who led our code enforcement building infrastructure position most recently. This new employee is Ryan Martin, who already has a commercial Class A CDL with many years of experience as a concrete finisher, which would be a great asset to Our Public Works. And Ryan started on October 5th, which was just yesterday. Second item I have is the Diamond Maps. At the previous meeting, I presented to council about Diamond Maps. This GIS-designed system for our water systems to keep track of the infrastructure in the city also would be a great tool for our code enforcement along with our fire department, with our hydrants and other things. Council had asked me to come back with where this would be paid out of and how it's going to be paid. Just to recap, the cost to the city for unlimited users is $900 a year. That's $900 a year, which we broke down between the fire department, code enforcement, water and sewer departments. It'd be taken out of the contracted services line item. And when broke down between the departments, it comes out to be a cost rate around $128 a year. This would be a great, like I said, a great benefit to the city, being able to track our infrastructure. As I had stated, it's currently being tracked by long-term employees who are just recalling when things have been replaced in the city on notebooks, things like that. So this would be a great tool. So again, that would be broke down, it's $900 a year. It comes out to be roughly $128 a year for those departments out of the contracted services line item.
Are you looking to do this this year or include this in our budget negotiation?
I would like to get it started now, but if we had to wait three months, I mean, we've done it for this long now, it could certainly be put on for, into the budget for next year.
Is there sufficient funding in all the contract service line items of all the departments to pay for it this year?
I would have to, couldn't be a answer on that.
Okay. If you can come back to us at the next meeting with...
Sure. Our finance supervisor's actually here, I don't know, Heather?
Yeah, I think they, for this year, I think with that amount, that is doable. And with us starting now, I don't know if it would run then, you know, if you started in November, if it were November to November again, when the actual, I don't think it's a January to January thing, but I could find out for that. It was something that was presented at a training seminar I went to. And like Neil said, right now, we have absolutely nothing other than old paper maps, notebooks, things like that. It would mark everything, we'd be able to start marking all that. So I think it would be huge, and the sooner we get started on it, I think the better. It's through PEA Water and they actually will help start setting it up, I think, so.
I guess my opinion would be, I understand the need, some of this goes all the way back to Buzz Evans 40 years ago that he had in his head. But I'd rather see some, you know, specific line items that there, that's there and where we look at next year's budget, so, just my opinion. Anybody else want to comment?
I got one. I've worked for the city about 13 years and we rely on a lot of old books and memories. Some of us were getting tied up in the late years that we remember quite good. But I think it'd be a great asset to the department and the city itself. Get this stuff together and put it down where people can see it. When everybody needs, if you need to look at it, you can go look at it, so, I guess.
If council has no problem with the manager coming back to us next meeting with specific line items and how we can pay for it this year? Or your recommendation to take it in the budget, whatever.
I do have a question. Is that not an, that also includes all the training that anybody would need to use it?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's not somewhere that we can line item it now?
I mean, we'd probably look into...
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, it would be $100 out of contracted services.
Just want to make sure all the contracted services have enough money in them, considering what we're facing with that budget. I'm not opposed to the project or the item, but...
The next item I have is code enforcement. Currently, the city ordinance, 904.4, snow removal in commercial zones. In that ordinance, nighttime snow shall be cleared prior to 11:00 a.m. in the morning, prevailing time. Skip, our code enforcement officer, would like council to consider changing that 11:00 a.m. time to 9:00 a.m. Skip is here, here at the meeting tonight to explain his reasoning to council in asking for that change. Skip?
The number one priority we have out there is safety of everybody. Snow removal is something that typically happens by business when you first open in the morning. 11 o'clock is almost lunchtime. There are some groups that rotate through lunch, that are leaving for lunch till 11 o'clock, you know, who wants to take their early lunch. We have chiropractors downtown, drugstores, eyelash shops, people that are going to the doctors downtown, a lot of people walk downtown. I think it's in their best interest and the interest of safety of everybody to move it up till 9 o'clock. So I just think that any business that opens at 8, 9 o'clock in the morning, there's no reason why they can't have the snow done by 9:00 in the morning. And you see most of the contractors that are downtown, they're downtown 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, getting their own start. And when I worked for myself, I was downtown. I was over at Dume's at 4:00 every night, so. That's pretty much it.
Any questions for Skip? Thanks Skip.
Thanks Skip, thank you.
Why don't we act 20s right now? Counsel's pleasure. Want to have the city solicitor draw up the changes and have the ordinance prepared for us for next meeting?
At first reading?
Yes.
All right Neil, council's all in agreement to have it drawn up for the next meeting. Thank you Skip.
Thank you.
The next item I have on the manager's report is just a Diamond Street update with some of the projects we have started over there. Last Friday, the contractor started on the western wall that was left at that site. Basically got all the debris, all the plaster that was off the wall, got that all cleaned up. The next step is for it to be sandblasted, we're still waiting on that. The contractor has moved on to the front wall where the archways are. They started that yesterday, they got all the glass down in the front on the Diamond Street side. They're going to be working the rest of the week to get that down. They were hoping by Thursday to have that front wall completely down. Just so everybody in the public understands, it's being taken down and the archways are going to be restored and then eventually put back up. We need to put a better base down for the archways to be attached back in that location. So we hope to have that down this week. So that's where we're at with the projects, two of the projects out of the three at the demo site. The next item I have is Sunset Heights Park. At the previous council meeting, council was addressed by Jamie Bush in regards to Sunset Heights Park. Jamie spoke about the condition of the park and how residents would like to see some improvements in that area. I had the opportunity to sit down with Jamie. We have decided to have a community day slash meet and greet. That'll be this Saturday from noon to 3:00 at Sunset Heights Park. That'll be an opportunity for the residents to meet the city officials. We're going to have a police car, fire truck, and a public works vehicle out there as well. We're also going to have a grill up there and cook some hot dogs and have some water as well. It'll be their chance to meet us and also to express their concerns to us on what they'd like to see in that area and that park. So, that's Sunset Heights. The next item I have is the ITDRC, which is the Informational Technology Disaster Resource Center. This is through Project Connect. This provides free hardware and installation for internet support during different crises. In response to the COVID-19, their initiative is to provide free homework hotspots to connect students and families living in rural and underserved communities. They also welcome community hotspots and they evaluate for needs, sustainability, and community impact. The city applied for the service and Wi-Fi has been set up at Burgess Park. Initially, we were looking to have the Wi-Fi service at the Admirer complex. Unfortunately, we don't have any kind of internet service down there for them to be able to hook the Wi-Fi. I have been speaking with councilman Watoski and looking at different options for the Admirer complex as far as internet service goes. I think most of us know down there, there's no phone service. It's very hard to text, do anything down there. I do want to thank Sarah Jones and Jess Hillburn for letting me know about this opportunity. Like I said, we did get the hotspot hooked up at Burgess Park. It is set up, so if you're, as far as how far out the Wi-Fi goes, I haven't tested it out, but at least it covers the main, it's set up at the splash pad building. So I think it covers most of the part there. So at least it's an opportunity to get on the Wi-Fi. There's no password or anything like that. You can just go to the Wi-Fi and it'll hook on, so. The last item I have is the CDVG project updates. Most recently, we went with Zach Nolway, planning director, and we spoke about the Admirer complex, some of the projects that we want to do here in the upcoming year using 2019 CDVG and also 2020. We have allocated somewhere to the amount of, quick, make them wrong, maybe $300,000 somewhere in that for the next few years for CDVG money to be used at the Admirer complex to improve it. Some of those projects we're looking at is putting lights at the high school baseball field, lights at the high school girls' softball field, and also a dog park. In the, which would be Field 7, this is in a far corner across from the Drake Well, or the Drake Well BMX track. We have been working with CJ Gervan, who has provided us lots of information on dog parks and some of the equipment that we even need, and getting price quotes. So the projects in the initial phase, the first phase is, if you want to call it, would be the lights at the ball fields and the dog park at the Admirer complex. And that's all I have on the manager's report.
Any questions to the manager? Do I hear a motion to accept his report? Place it on file?
So may.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call and roll please.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Minister of Boards and Authorities, Defense Memorial Library, 9:15. Do I hear a motion to accept and place them on file?
I'll make that motion.
Your second?
Second.
Call and roll please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Council committee updates. Nothing Sarah?
No.
Briefly, on Friday, civil service got together to go over a couple of things. I guess back in, back February, it was before my time on council, council had approved some changes to testing guidelines and what the acceptance rates were. It was brought to our attention by our solicitor that it was actually civil service who had to approve those changes and then council would approve after civil service. So those changes, I guess, that were approved by council in February aren't really in effect as of right now because civil service did not approve them yet. There were a couple of questions that have gone back to both of the chiefs. Neil can give a little bit further update because I guess some of that has happened already from Chief Lamy. But it looks like here in the next couple of weeks, we will be reapproaching that, re-discussing it at our meeting to update the civil service testing.
Yeah, as far as the police farm goes, there wasn't really any questions as far as what they were asking for. As we work with the fire department, they had some questions about the starting age of 18 instead of 21. Chief Lamy ended up with them today. They were able to get information from Joe, he was able to explain some things. Everybody's on the same page now and as councilman Watoski said, we'll be coming in front of council here shortly for those, their approval.
Okay. Take a while of that next week? Next council meeting?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Thanks Jay.
Yep.
Anything for the airport?
Yeah, just the airport update is that, I don't know if we ever got a chance to put it on our Facebook, but we have a group of power parachutes people, probably be up to almost 50 of them, that'll be out there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's open to the public. Saturday evening, there'll be a little concert out there. Our band, I guess you'd call it, from 6:00 to 9:00. But I was told this evening, right before I came here, I was out there, they are going to have some kind of a little food truck out there. And they'll just have an area for it to off if anybody brings children so that they don't get too close to the props on the equipment. But it's a good thing for the people to support, afford to see the people out there. And then, starting next Monday, the runway is going to be shut down for 20-some days for rehab and the runway.
Bill?
No.
You want to update on our meeting today?
Oh, okay, I can do that. And we had a meeting this afternoon about 4:00 with the, considering the baseball fields down in the Admirer complex. We met with the boosters and like the coaches, couple of coaches. We got some ideas, we threw it out to them, they threw some ideas back to us. Right now, they're concerned about the infield and the outfield. I think that's going to be taken care of through the school, I do believe. We're concerned on dugouts for the both home and away. And I think we're going to, we're going to get with them and see what's available to us and to them and try to improve what we can improve on down there with what we have. It's in a three-phase, as the mayor said, we work on three phases. This is going to be phase number one, so I don't think anything else, Danny?
All right, at this time, we invite the public to take part in our meeting pertaining to anything on, under whole business. The only thing under whole business is the 2019 audit. We allow for five minutes for individual speaker. If anybody would like to speak on the 2019 audit, come forward, state your name, and give your address. We'll give you five minutes.
I'm not sure if it pertains to the audit. My name is Larry Welton and I'm another citizen of Tideswell. And I actually lied about that two days ago. I was in North Carolina at Mike's Farm and I had a Tideswell t-shirt on. It's at the airport. The guy came up, said, "You're from Tideswell?" I said, "You bet I am." And he said he was too. We were actually both from Cherry Tree Township, so I want to make sure that, I'm sorry I lied, but I do feel like I'm a member of the community.
We won't hold that against you.
I know, and I told, I told them that, you know, under the new council rules, that anybody that wants to go to a meeting in the street like an honorary citizen of Tideswell to have a question or a concern and not to be authorized because maybe they're just a person with a grudge. Which I'm glad to say that I've been identified as that person. I've been identified as being vindictive and I don't object to any of those categories. I just want to make that clear. As far as the audit goes, I have no problem with the audit. In fact, I've read the audit. Little history, I've been CPA, or was a CPA from 1967 to about 1995. And previous experience, I was a chief financial officer with American Sterilizer, a $500 million fortune company in Erie, Pennsylvania. And as part of that, I was responsible for the $500 million budget. So I'm familiar with budgets and I'm familiar with financial analysis. So it's not just like some little hobby I've had to spend my way of making my life. In recent years, last three years, I was 73 years old three years ago and I accepted being irrelevant and having no purpose. And then the city mayor, the city manager, deputy mayor called me into a meeting about the airport. And since that, my life has been a little bit of an upheaval trying to figure out why that meeting took place. I understand Mayor Payton, I don't know if the rules changed for participation since I was here the last time, it's been several months.
Regarding what Larry?
Like, do I just make statements or can I ask questions?
You can make your statement.
I can't ask questions.
You can ask questions, but you may not get a direct answer at this meeting.
I got you, okay, so. As far as representation, making a statement, I'm going to make a statement, obviously, because I'm not going to get answers, I'll give the answer. Because obviously, I wouldn't come to a meeting and ask a question.
Just remember in your question and answer and yourself, you have five minutes.
Okay, so, the first best question I have is, is everybody in this room willing and purposely or they're planning to just, thinks water's over the water, water over the dam with the interplan transfers of the past? And is there any concern or is it just we're going to move on? Or you're going to forgive and forget? Is that the consensus of this group about the interplan transfers? So we're getting no answer, Payton?
Right.
Okay, so that's obviously true. I'm all for that too, but one of the problems I have is, I don't think the citizens know what they're moving away from. You want us to, you want the citizens to move forward, you want them to forgive and forget. So far, nobody knows what it is that we're forgiving and forgetting. So I was pretty disappointed with the auditor not finding anything wrong with the 2019 transfers. Since I've got a, I've hit right to the documents, I did a write-to-no request in December of 2019. 2019, and I had done that request also in 2000, or in March of that year, and the finance manager at that time, these two people, weren't not beautiful, just nice young ladies, they weren't there, but I got the request back that, I don't want to be, got back, got an answer back that no report existed. Well, then I found an email from the former finance manager to me stating that they did this, and she had to have a meeting, so she, I gave her the name, and then they sent me an answer to that request. These guys are right here. So this is, and I don't know if any of you are going to get a little nervous here.
It's like being involved in.
Yes, kind of like. Sorry, mom, I had a Walmart today buying cranberries, we haven't bought any at school.
That sounds like her, doesn't surprise me. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Larry.
Don't have one for you, and it wasn't on purpose. Okay, so on the left-hand side of that is a report that I got back from the former finance manager, and it's the actual hours that were worked in the year 2018. So in the city budget for 2019, the former manager, and before I move on, I want to apologize, Neil, I sent him an email yesterday saying I could ask him a question, which I didn't think he could answer. And the point of sending that email was that nobody can answer it. Point is that nobody in this room, including the auditors who are not here, can give anybody insurance that the interfund transfers are legal, accurate and fair, represent work actually done, and are in compliance with the law. Nobody can answer that question. However, last year, all the people that sit in this room stood up and personally said that the 2018 transfers were legal, accurate and fair, represented work actually done, and were in compliance with the laws of the municipality. And you guys are not, did not take notes in the citizens of Titusville, took a note to obey the laws of the government. So I think that's part of your responsibility to note that those interfund transfers meet those requirements that I just mentioned. So if you look in that schedule I gave you, that's the work of Lisa Pearson. She gives that report to the previous city manager every payroll period, every month, every quarter, every year. I have the reports for 2018, '17, '16. Also, through the right-to-request process, I got work papers from the years 2010, '11, '12, and '13. In those three years, the city manager added $760,000 bailout money, just identified in the work papers, bailout general fund, $760,000. In the year 2018, he budgeted $14,580 hours, and the people in those departments only worked $9,800. So he overbilled purposely $230,000. So that's something that I don't think should just be water over the dam. Part of the, part of the issues here is that everybody thinks nobody, this doesn't make any difference. Here's the schedule. It's kind of an MBA financial schedule, but unusually, it's shorter than my normal schedule. So when I look at the $750,000 in those first three years, the 240 in the year 18, 170 in '17, 130 in '15, '16, I get a million two seventy that was transferred for services that wasn't done. That leaves three years that I don't know the answer to, being 14 and '15 and '19. The reason there is no answer for '19 was, the former city manager had the timekeeper, Lisa Pearson, stop posting the time in March of 2019 because I had sent a request asking for those records. And he told her that he didn't want anybody to know those records existed. The schedule I handed out to here is, what happens when you substitute $3 million of profits from the rev, from those interfunds, you substitute those over instead of adding The tax numbers that are in here are actually from the tax rolls I got from the county, and they've been adjusted to representative values. So if you substitute $3 million from taxes, everybody that's a taxpayer saves their share of $3 million bucks. But when you take the money from the water fund, sewer fund, half of that money, remember, $83 million of his exempt property, when he's sixty-eight, is taxable. The customers of the water and sewer funds, fifty percent of them don't pay taxes in Titusville. So when you take $3 million from them, that water fund, you're taking a million five from the exempt properties. The city, the hospital, the school, the churches, University of Pittsburgh renders, who don't own property, the people up in Pleasantville and, you know, are paying the cost of the Florida lease and sweep the streets. So nobody hurt, gets hurt. Okay, so the exempt properties pay a million five that they shouldn't pay. The top twenty-five percent of the property people have to reduce, because they pay, they save taxes, a million nine forty-one, but they pay in services because everybody pays kind of the same rate. They save a million five sixty-six. In the middle, two fifty percent, the two quadrants, it's almost a break even. Properties in the lower twenty-five percent pay $187,000 more, cost a million to live here. That's a sham. And if you guys don't want to do anything about it, that's, I think that's going to be your call. So that'll be your legacy. So I know you don't take questions, you don't want to have dialogue and discussions, and to me, it's like, I feel like I'm back here where I was three years ago, when Smith was running this outfit. So I just kind of, I'm kind of, it's kind of embarrassing. You know why the, you know how often the interfund transfers are mentioned in the audit? Does anybody know? They're not mentioned. You know why they're not mentioned? They're not in there. Next question, why aren't the Indian related party transactions? The auditor cannot put in his audit financial statements any transaction between related parties. When the city manager completes a contract with the water and sewer and refuse department, and then goes over and sits at an interposition, he controls both units, either related parties and control management. So he says, "This is what I'm willing to fill you," and then he goes over and says, "This is what I accept." That's not allowed to be in the financial statements. Previous administration claims that $891,000 in the year 2018 was for services rendered. That $891,000 is not in the operating statements of the audit and financial statements. It's been eliminated by the auditors. They do not, is not part of their audit. They don't care what it is, they're not responsible for it. The only people responsible for the interfund transfers are sitting in this room. The previous ones who handled them, they're gone. And if you wanted to speak water over the dam, I'm saying leave it up to you guys. No dialogue? So this is?
No.
Well, I will, I will make a comment. You and I have been friends for a long time.
And we're still friends.
And I take, I take exception to you addressing the people at this table and comparing them to the last administration and how.
Why don't we have a dialogue?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. I take exception to that, because these individuals sitting at this table have addressed this issue, and they have changed the processes to make this legal and legitimate. We have.
Did I ever say they haven't? I swear, I haven't.
No, but for you to compare us to what has happened in the last twelve years, that we have no control of.
You're not.
We have no control of it.
I know I'm over five minutes, but I think I have the floor.
Well, I had the floor, and I relinquish it to you.
Okay, so in everything that I said, I never said anybody in this room was responsible for the.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
So I said, I said I take exception to you comparing us to the last administration because there's no dialogue going back and forth. We don't have time to rehash the last twelve years tonight.
Who do you represent? Do you just represent the taxable, the people that have problems?
We represent everybody.
Do you represent the exempt?
We represent everybody in the community, whether they pay taxes, don't pay taxes, pay a water bill, or don't pay a water.
And you don't care that they paid a million five that they shouldn't?
And you know the answer to that question before you ask it there. You know for a fact that I deeply care about that. And I know these individuals deeply care about that, but I can't go back to 2012 and say, "We're going to make it go away."
No.
We're making it go away today.
But nobody, who knows you're doing that?
The budget process has just started, and it will be made known during the budget process.
So do you understand what the benefit was to the previous administration and the previous elected divisions?
Yes. Yes, I do. And we're facing a budget today because of what they did. We're facing a budget crisis today that we have to fix over a period of time. We are not going to be able to fix it overnight. But Heather Plowman and Lisa Pearson have done an excellent job tracking hours worked. We know, if you walked into Heather's office tomorrow, she could tell you how many hours and what the cost was for water, sewer, and refuse to date. We know that number.
We know that, and don't we also know that we've known that every year?
I wasn't around every year.
No, but they were around every year.
Heather Plowman was not around every year.
Okay.
Neil Freitas is not.
Lisa Pearson is the person that does those reports.
What was that question?
You can only, all the directions are what you're given.
What?
If the previous council give them directions, that they have to follow those directions, Larry. If the council said, "No, we're not going to give you this information," that information was not given out.
How do you follow that?
We, we as the council here will not tell you, though. We're going to give you an answer somewhere down the line. I'll guarantee that.
Maybe I missed something, but I didn't, I guess I didn't, I missed any kind of reference to the previous council with us. I thought you were trying to say that, that you feel like you're not getting the same answers.
I feel like that there's no, there's no dialogue, there's like, I don't know why this just goes on, on kind of exposed. Because there's, there's, the people who benefited are not going to sue. The people that save all the money are not going to sue. The only people that could come after you are the exempt properties, okay, and the people in Titusville. And when you get done, it's not, it's not going to be, but it's like, to me, the deceit is, I don't care whether it's legal or not. I got newspaper articles here, here's, here's an article from October 14.
Danny, we are way past five minutes.
All right, all right, well, there's a, there's another opportunity for you to speak at the end of the meeting, but the solicitor's indicated we're way past the five minutes, so we have to.
But can't we allow him to have more right now, so it's?
Well, if you're going to allow him to have more, anybody that speaks has to be given the same amount of time that any meeting may come to. Do you follow the policy?
I thought it was five minutes or, or accepted by council to extend. We let, we let people that have special events talk for fifteen minutes sometimes. I, I make, I make a claim, since we've all worked so long with this in the, in the campaign, that we let, let them finish and then we're done.
You don't, Mr. Welton has, Mr. Welton has the floor.
You just changed the agenda.
Counsel, is counsel, do you want to extend more time to Mr. Welton?
I would, I would give it to him.
Bill?
I would assume just have him come back at the end of the meeting. I think we've spent a little bit, too, a little bit of time on this now, Larry. Let us get, I need to put some of this in my mind, what you're talking about. So I'd like to see you come back after.
I, I agree that it should come back in the next public comment time.
Okay, no problem.
I, I figure you might as well do it all at one time. That's how I look at it.
But the solicitor's point is, if we do that, then at every meeting, we have to allow it.
When we made this ordinance before the solicitor was here, it was five minutes unless we, unless we extend it.
I'm not going very long with this gentleman.
I'm just telling them what the policy is, and if they have to follow it or not.
Or, you know, one of the things is, is to make sure that they don't take the bait. That'd be a terrible thing to do.
Larry, how much more time do you need?
Probably a couple minutes.
All right, go for it.
All right, so my disappointment was with, so here we have the auditors, last years, the auditors do not specifically say, you cannot get the auditors that are here to say that they audited the interfund transfers. They will not say that. An auditor cannot quote anything other than what's in his audit reports. When he makes a verbal summary of what's in the audit report, he'd best be almost quoting the audit report. When the lady last year said, "We are in pretty good shape." Who in the, it's "we," why is she a "we"? She said "we" instead of "the city is in good shape." She said, "We are in good shape." She also said, "Many, we, we have no problem with the interfund transfers. Many people, many, many municipalities use them, although Titusville does it differently." Titusville does it differently because they estimate public workspeople, even though they have time cards. The reason they have S, use, why he had to add the public workspeople is, weren't enough money in City Hall. If he took a hundred percent of City Hall, he'd get $380,000. When you need 600, you can't, you can't allocate $600,000 to $300,000 with a salary. So he brings this list of twelve other people onto the list. You get the number you want, if you see the allocation schedule, get the number that you want, you put it in down here, and then you adjust all these percentages. This, this sheet is plenty more valuable than a napkin. There's nothing of any substance behind this sheet. It looks pretty, it's got, look at the color, look at the color of the bottles. So I know you want to answer questions, but do you guys know who pays your salary? Good point. I don't know if I have one of these for everybody. Seventy-five percent of your salary is paid by sewer, the water, and refuse department.
They're not paying us a lot, Larry.
No, I know, but they're, they're paying seventy-five percent of it.
That's about seventy-five percent of all.
I'm just saying.
Not that.
And how much, how much of City Hall is that water, sewer, and refuse paying? Seventy percent. Seven hundred, every ten hours, everybody in City Hall is not working for the city. Sixty percent of the public workspeople supposedly are working in the water and sewer. Even though, a direct laborer, you know where he works. It isn't like you have to allocate, you don't allocate direct laborers. You do a lot of time card. I did this project, I did this project. Lisa Pearson, for a number of years, has added up that very accurately. She's not doing anything different this year than she's done since she's been doing it, okay? It's the same system. In one of his newspaper clips, he says, "We have to hire a full-time person if we want to keep track of this work." They always have, didn't have to hire a full-time person. Here's what Stephen Falk said on February 2nd. "The transfers are included in the scope of our audit, and we've known it, no we should do that." He also wrote an email to the title-hold guy and said that he approved, that his firm approved the audit. Well, here's a go. June 26, 2019. I don't remember the guy's name was. City manager said that transfers were higher than recent years, but claimed that was due to the city doing more projects. They'd never known what the project were. That's just funny. The transfers, according to the city manager, are made to pay for work for city employees due to benefit individual funds, such as fixing sewer problems. He also said another time that they reimburse, it's never been a reimbursement, it's been a prepayment. You're not even allowed to prepay funds out of the water sewer department to the city. It can only be paid after the services are performed. But I guess my whole point is, uh, if you represent everybody in exempt taxable people, the hospital, the school, renters, 52% of the people in the city are renters. They, they paid a million and a half that they weren't supposed to pay over the last 10 years. I think that's outrageous. And I wasn't making any reference to this, I'm saying not having the dialogue is, you know, I, I like everybody outside the auditor's ability to come up and just go crazy when they find out that the city manager had told on the county clerk to quit keeping track of the labor. I don't know what these auditors looked at. I don't know that they looked back to 2018 and saw the deception that was going on in 2018. Okay, interfund transfers are not a concern of the auditors, they're not his concern, they're your concern. Doesn't matter whether it's legal, it was deceitful. Most people are like smiling and laughing at you guys.
Now, I, I like dialogue. I'm a fan of dialogue. So, um, is it all right if I ask you some questions?
Sure.
Okay, um, would you agree that how everything is set up, that interfund transfers are a necessity?
No, I, I mean, they, they could be, they're not. You, you can identify those people that, well, you can, here's.
No.
Let me, let me explain why I have to say that. In the issue with the city of Titusville, the city of Titusville is the only municipality that I'm aware of in Pennsylvania that does two allocations. They allocate City Hall, which is at $390,000 and they allocated 70% of it over there. An allocation is problematic. Most states, and I think Pennsylvania would have one, and a city solicitor could get ahold of somebody in the office, there are approved methods and practices. For example, the building inspector, 75% of his work being done in those three departments is just, it's funny. He doesn't, he doesn't even, you know, it's, it's, it's funnier than you guys being a real lot of that bothers. The human resource person gets allocated based on the number of employees that she works. These people get, get billed based on where they provide the services. Instead of somebody sitting with a crystal ball and saying, she works 25, 25, 25, 25, ask her, where does she do her work? Ask, ask the treasurer. So that's the, that's the city hall part. The direct laborers, they're, they're never allocated. Any, any other city does not do an estimate. They keep track of the time, just like they do it exactly like you guys are doing it now. But for the last eight years, it's been this crystal ball thing.
Where, where I'm getting at with that question is, um, to, to be able to pay people properly, you know, if we do indeed track those hours, an interfund transfer is necessary if employee A works 30 hours in water and sewer and 10 hours on the street. Uh, those 30 hours should come out of water and sewer and transferred into the general fund to pay it.
I'm saying, I'm saying the 6.4 million transfer, 3 million was bogus.
So to me, it sounds like the issue was in the past that the, the numbers were, it's not the actual transfer, it's the fact that they were grossly overestimated before things happened. Is it, am I following this correctly, that that's really where the issue lies, that?
It's exactly the same thing here, is what I was making comparison. If a city manager went in and altered a, kind of say a guy worked 40 hours and on that time card, he said, I worked 30 for the city and 10 for the store. If a city manager went and altered that to make it, uh, 20 hours for the city and 20 for the store, that would be deceitful, that would be fraud because there'd be a trail. When a city manager has the actual time cards of somebody, he compares it to his estimate and he sees that the estimate's wrong, by not doing it, he's having the same effect as that purpose of fraud. Yet he knows what the actual hours are and he chooses not to make a reconciliation. The city manager's in charge of the people that handle finance. He is the finance guru. Not the guru. He's responsible for them and he has to trust them in it. But as part of that, a reconciliation has to be made. It says in the, not, I don't know in the law, but in case studies and the conversations and the CPA holdings, that you're required to, if you do an estimate, you're required to compare it to the actual. You just don't do an estimate in December and say, these guys are gonna work 14,000 hours, write me a check on January 1st for half and then the other half on June 1st. No idea how the city does that.
Now, what I have to say is, I, I do know for a fact that all of the practices have been put in place to, to accurately track the amount of hours worked.
Well, I'm just confirming they've always had, they've always been had.
Well, and I, I understand that. And I know that going forward with this council, what, what, what it's being looked at as is knowing those hours instead of. Yes, I did. Yeah. Even though it's still essentially all budgets are in estimate in a sense, um, the, by tracking the hours, we will be able to produce a budget that's as close to functional as possible without having to grossly estimate.
No, you're not gonna.
What is coming in.
You're not gonna estimate all.
And, and so for me, sitting here, I, I, there's absolutely nothing that I can do about what has happened in the past. Um, and I can, I can look at the past and I can learn an example, I can learn a lesson from that past, but I can't, if I continuously focus on it, my work going forward on this council isn't going to be as effective. So, it, you know, to say that, um, which you did make the comment, that if we just accept it and then water over the dam, um, that's our legacy, is what you said, and I disagree with that. I disagree, I, I believe that our legacy will be that we did recognize that things happened, we put practices in place to alter that, and our legacy will be determined four or five years down the road when we can then see that the budget is functioning properly.
I was, or it's a word, I'm not Mark Twain, I like Mark Twain, but I'm obviously not Mark Twain. That didn't mean your legacy, I just, I think, I just meant it's your responsibility whether you expose the previous practices or not. And I don't see any harm in exposing it. I don't know, I don't see, I don't see what, I don't see what the issue is.
I think it will be.
This guy would think, this guy would probably tell you it could be planteering. But it's not for me because we have evidence. I mean, I have all this evidence that I got through the right to know. You know where most of the information came from? City Council minutes, in the audit report. You know, when you look at the audit report and you take the last 10 years and you look at the interfund transfers and what they were in 2010 and you look at what the tax revenues were, you use that as a base year? The incremental increase in 10 years has been $6 million. $5 million came out of the increase in the interfund transfers, the only way the city survived. And $1 million came out of the, out of the tax. So how do you stop, you know, you guys, you guys are elected officials. Where is your practice and procedures to make sure that interfund transfers don't get out of hand again? You guys were already elected for four years. Heck, as soon as the taxpayers find out, you're gonna have to raise the taxes, you're gonna bring these old people back?
Be quiet so they don't have to raise the taxes.
I, uh, my dialogue would just be that, I think, I think some of this will be automatically exposed when, when we bring forth a new budget and show how we're doing it by actual allocation, by actual hour. Isn't that fair enough?
Yeah, I think, we as a council, I think we deserve a chance to get this on the upper, upper level.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's any question, even though like every place that goes around town, this guy's like, like a Messiah, and I think deservedly so.
It's cause you spend Christmas by the law.
Everybody's talking about these two people, the bullies are gone. It's fun to be in City Hall. Treasurer likes being there, the controller likes being there. In fact, they're, they're not treated like, uh, employees, they're treated like elected officials.
Well, while moving forward, Larry, I just want you to know that when the audit report come in, there were probably three or four pages of recommendations. From, you know, needing someone in, in City Hall in the treasurer's office to a full page of IT problems, which Jay and Neil are working on. We've taken those recommendations serious and Heather is tracking those numbers. At the beginning of the year, we transferred $500,000 to the general fund as a loan. Okay? And we, and we are charging ourselves like 1.3, 1.2, 1.3% interest, which if that money is not used specifically by justifying hours worked, we're on the book to pay that back at the end of the year. And we're prepared to do that. So moving forward, like Jay says, we have.
I don't think as a person in this town, it doesn't feel so much more comfortable with the leaderships of that grid now. And I am not quite, I'm personally as excited as anybody else I talk to. So, but here we have, 2019 is not closed. The city hall, the city has, even though they didn't compile them, they have the time cards. Yet they compiled them. The odds are that since 2019, had a $240,000 shortfall or an overage just in public works. And you guys have demonstrated right now that it's gonna be, if it was $200,000 after six months, probably at the end of the year, they're gonna, they would have charged, overcharged 400,000.
Pretty close.
So it seems that if you took, it seemed like 2019, if you tracked it like that, it's pretty obviously that they overcharged 200, 350,000. You can just say they continue on. If, if they're estimating, it seems it wasn't the prior.
Okay.
So what, what, what should you do about that?
Well, probably, Larry, that's a discussion for a later day during our budget sessions on, on how we're gonna handle that. Uh, to answer that question off the top of our head tonight, probably can't do it, and that's not avoiding the question.
Well, you do know that you guys are part of the Commonwealth and you do know that general, the, uh, auditor general has a whole bunch of staff that likes to do this kind of work. And if you guys would contact them and ask them to send somebody down to give you some help, I bet they would. Cause I don't think, I don't think in this kind of a case, I, I think, I think you're passing, kind of passing the buck.
Okay. Well, can we, we agree to leave it there for tonight? And we welcome you back any, any other night.
But you know what I mean, that is, that, that's, the million and a half is, is not a fair deal to those exempt property players. They're, they're your responsibility as much as the people that save the million and a half.
I, I don't think I'm arguing that point with you at all.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
I hate to bring the next governor's down. Do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the 2019 audit?
I'll make that motion.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, what, what difference does it make whether we do or we don't?
Yeah. We're just accepting it, we're not saying we totally agree with everything. All right? Any further, Jay?
No.
Call the rule, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
No.
Mr. Witowski?
No.
At this time, we allow for public participation for items under new business. Which is a special event movie in the park, Halloween, CDVG resolution, our application and CARES Act agreement and authorization. Special event application movie in the park. State your name and.
I'm Sarah Miller, Executive Director of the Tuskahoe Council of Arts. Uh, we are hoping to part air with the YWCA, they're having Fall Fest on that Friday, the 23rd of October. And after the Fall Fest, we'd like to be able to head down to Ed Meyer Complex to watch a Halloween themed movie, we're hoping to play Hocus Pocus, which starts at about 7:00 and be over at 8:30. But our final movie that we had in the park in September was canceled because nobody showed due to the cold. And so we were hoping to get permission to either have like patio heaters, propane burning, or contain fires in like 50 Allen drum. So we could encourage people to come and have a way to stay warm. In addition to the movie in the park, which would be operating just like we have throughout the summer.
Questions?
No. I think it's great of you.
Okay.
I just had a question, is it the same area where you had the movies? Is this a different area at Ed Meyer or the same?
No, it would be the same area.
Same location?
And if I were to have the contained fires, I would leave them probably on that driveway so we're not ruining any grass. And the ashes would be contained in the barrel, so there wouldn't be anything on the ground.
Neil, do you have the insurance?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve or not approve this special event application, uh, for the Council of the Arts?
So do.
I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Thank you. Halloween, trick or treating.
Uh, yeah, council, there is a resolution from 2004, uh, the resolution of the Council of the City of Titusville to set the day and time for Halloween trick or treat in the city of Titusville. Appears it's always been the last Thursday of October from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM each year. I guess the question is Halloween this year's on a Saturday. I know we had some brief discussion about, I know some other municipalities are moving theirs to Saturday because of the lonely theme on the weekend. So, that's the discussion for council to decide whether or not to live it on. Well, I guess first off, if you're having trick or treating, secondly, are you wanting to keep it on Thursday or live it Saturday?
There's no movie on Saturday?
Council of the Arts doesn't have anything on Saturday?
No, we moved it to the 23rd.
Okay, good. We originally heard it was gonna be the 30th.
That was our original plan, but I'm pulling the I'm still dear to the job card. Do not realize the partnership we had with the YWU in terms of Fall Fest, and so do not bridge that there, I was, we're not bringing you on the phone. But thank you for considering that.
Okay. It's council's pleasure.
I'd make a motion, I'd like to see it stay the same.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Motion to leave it on Thursday.
Yes.
What's that date, Neil?
Uh, that would be the.
29th.
29th?
Oh, yeah.
Motion on the floor to leave trick or treating on the 29th, do I hear a second?
We can't discuss before we have a second?
No.
I'll second.
All right, so motions on the floor, uh, to hold trick or treating on the 29th, uh, discussion.
Well, I just wondered, I know this about a lot of people in the community, ask.
Well, I just wonder, I know this has been a lot of people in the community ask why we don't have it on Halloween itself, and I'd like to hear from the Messiah over here. Wouldn't call, no, seriously, I would like to hear, since I've only been back in town three years, I'd like to hear what it, why you do it on Thursday instead of Saturday. Why do you think?
I think it's always been on Thursday.
Ever since that thing, incident happened, right?
Ever since the incident down in the city many years ago. I don't see why, you know, people are used to it, they get a few hours. Why change it? I mean, people are used to that Thursday night.
I, yeah, I, I was a kid when it happened, um, and they actually, for a couple of years, it was Thursday, or I think they did it Saturday afternoon, it was during the day. Um, and then to move it to night, they made it Thursday night, and I believe that they used to always schedule a, a teacher workday for, on the Friday following, so it used to be kind of a long weekend.
Do you have a work-
That's long.
I, I am actually, I am actually a fan of having it on Halloween, but I also know that there are several people in the community who love Halloween and kind of go overboard it, and I've seen a lot of people that they have already taken the day off of work, they take it off in advance.
Thursday?
Yeah, that Thursday to prepare everything for trick or treaters and I, you know, I would hate to kind of throw a wrench in their plans and-
That's a little lightened up, right?
Yeah, it, the kids, I would have been, a lot of the kids have been denied, denied so much this, this summer. So why take them Halloween, don't they? On, on, you know, Thursday night. I can see, I can really see it on Saturday.
And then also by having it Thursday night, if some other communities have changed it to Saturday, uh, maybe it gives the kids some opportunity to get a couple of trick or treats in. So, yeah.
We will go.
Sarah?
Bring him in.
I know, I would prefer to see it on Halloween, but, you know, I, I don't really have a firm opinion either way, so I'm, I'm good with whatever.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, a second, uh, to leave Halloween on, trick or treating on the 29th. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Thanks for the explanation, Bill.
Resolution number 24, CDBG application, Neil?
Yes, this is a resolution of City Titusville authorizing signatures and submission of the fiscal year 2020 Community Development Lock Grant, CDBG, application by Crawford That basically gets just, uh, basically just approving, officially approving the fiscal year 2020 CDBG application.
Do I hear a motion to approve or not approve Resolution Number 24?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Resolution 25, the CARES Act agreement and authorization, Neil?
Yes, this is a resolution in the City Council of City Titusville to approve the Corona virus relief fund governmental recipient agreement and to authorize the Mayor of Titusville, City Council to sign said agreement. Uh, this is, uh, City Titusville's been awarded funds through the Crawford County Municipal Aid Program, the amount of $9,358.66 in the first cycle of funding reimbursement for COVID-related expenses.
Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 25?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 25.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
At this time, well, we offer the floor for public input, anybody wishing to speak to Council. Mr. Elliott, state your name.
James Elliott, 306 North Francis Street, Titusville. Uh, I have a couple of questions concerning Halloween. Can you tell me when Council has, uh, voted on the resolution in the past? Has it always been around this time? Or has it like been in September or August or anything like that? Have you looked back through the previous year minutes?
I have not, I've only found Resolution 12 of 2004 putting it on that Thursday. I could not tell you.
Okay, because, because if you do it next year, in order to make it convenient for everyone, you have to decide like in July, so people will, uh, won't have to put in their time off, because if you wait till this week, next year, you have the same problem.
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, then I had another question about the, uh, if you could tell me who's restoring the archways at the Diamond Street property and what the cost is going to be associated with that?
Uh, as far as restoring would be Bob Joyce. And I do not have a cost.
Okay, so it's an open checkbook for that?
Uh, I would say it's an open check.
Okay. All right, and then for Larry Weldon, uh, he had taught for a long period during the old business, which actually it doesn't say old business on this, where you want to talk, it just says pertaining to agenda items. Uh, but couldn't you have also just given him a special presentation, time slot, you have the right to change the agenda at any time, I would think. I guess the solicitor's here, he can tell us. Uh, you have that spot up here where you could just take that correction, but we didn't know.
We didn't, we didn't know if Mr. Weldon would have contacted Mr. Freitas, he could have had a, a special presentation.
He could ask for a special presentation.
It usually doesn't take that long.
Right.
Okay. All right, and pertaining to his presentation, uh, where he said there could be some fraud on there, is the city interested or are they considering going back and maybe charging the previous manager for fraud?
I'm not going to let them talk about that. That's a legal decision that needs to be made, and that would involve litigation, so we can't talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Council comments?
I just wanted to ask a question about, except for the financial statements, but one of the things going forward to Jay's point, when you have legal interfund transfers, accurately, let's say the Public Works people, in the auditors, because whether it's an arms-length transaction or not, the auditors are required by auditing standards to eliminate those charges. When that happens, I'm reading the operating statements, and if I had the auditor, I look at the operating statements for water and sewer. Does anybody have a copy of the auditor?
I don't.
The, so let's say that in 2020, you guys actually transferred bona fide arms-length transactions in your definition of $400,000 to the water, from the water and sewer. In the statements, those expenses will not be shown there. So how do I, as a reader, know what the real income is of those three statements? You guys need to have an internal, so when you go to do the rates, the water rates and sewer rates, I think, I'd have something to do with cost justification. I mean, you just go to a crystal ball and say what the water rate is, or is there an engineering company that comes in and helps determine it?
Usually an engineer firm calculating setup.
Yeah, so, I mean, you understand what I'm saying, nobody, nobody knows in this city what the operating income is for those three departments. It's not in the audit statements, because the audit statements eliminate all interfund transfers. Your budget system treats those interfund things as an expense in the budget, but you guys don't put out any other statements than the audit statements that I'm aware of. Are there any internal financial statements entered at the year end?
Showing, showing what? The total income?
Showing, showing the water and sewer.
The, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but the final, the final budget numbers at the end of December, once those are closed out, would show the exact amount we collected and the exact amount we spent, correct?
Yeah, your revenue and your expenses, when you start looking at the, the audit and the financial statements, um, if you look, they break down the general, they break down your enterprise funds and things like that, and they do show on there the transfers and-
But they don't show them as an operating expense.
Um, I'd have to look at the audit to, to see exactly how, but they are, yes, I believe they are separate, they show revenues and expenses and, um, why buildings-
The audit just shows the transfer, it doesn't, so when you're looking at the salaries expenses of the sewer department, it only has the people that are present in there. If the Public Works people were $200,000 fixing the sewer line, in the audit financial statements, those, that $200,000 is not part of the labor costs on the sewer.
When the auditors come in, they, they look at all of that, and when they-
I know, and when they publish it, I'm just saying, if you, if you get your audit statements, you look at the salaries and fringes for the sewer department, it only includes the people that you mentioned in there. The people that actually went over and dug the dishes from Public Works, the auditors and the, not a lot of those. So I'm just saying, how do you know, how does anybody in this room know what the income is to these funds?
By the final year-end numbers.
But where, where are they? They're in the audit report, right?
No, I'm not even talking about the audit report, we're looking, when we look at our December year-end budget, we'll know what taxes we collected, what, what water we collected, what sewer we collected, um, you know, you're talking audit, I'm talking our, our financial report that we get from Heather. And in January, in January, we'll-
Right, good point, I'm just saying, the public doesn't, the public doesn't see what he sees.
Uh, no, but they could, they could.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think we just need, uh, before we end, to have a motion authorizing you to close on Friday on the day property, or you or Neil, or whoever.
Uh, we're closing on a day property on Friday. Do I hear a motion to have the proper official sign it?
Make a motion, the proper official sign it, Doc.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes, yes.
Comments by Council, Sarah?
I don't have any tonight.
Bill?
Uh, just one for Larry. All our budget sessions are open to the public, am I right?
You're right.
More sessions.
So, uh, you know, I, I appreciate if you want to come out and sit down and listen to what's going on, your input, uh, we can use all we, all we can use, we'd, we'd love to have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay?
Um, yeah, I'll try to make this quick. I, today I got to have a conversation with Councilman Crouch, and this is something I've seen my entire life here. Titusville, I, I, I love this community, and I'd say our biggest Achilles' heel with everything is, uh, we spend a lot of time looking at the past. So I have this quote here from Lyndon Johnson that says, "Yesterday is not ours to recover, but tomorrow is ours to win or lose." And I, I use an analogy with Councilman Crouch today, and I said, "I feel like so much in Titusville, we, it, the analogy is, we're driving this car down the interstate, and while we're driving the car down the interstate, all we're doing is looking in our rearview mirror." And if we do that, uh, there's a couple of things that are going on. We're missing all of these exits that we're going by that could guide us to so many great unknown places. And then the final and worst thing is, if we're looking in our rearview mirror, it's not a matter of if, but just a matter of when we crash. And, um, I can remember when Cytemp closed down, and I feel like so many people in Titusville, we have focused in the rearview mirror to that one thing. And I will tell you that there is a lot of great stuff that is either happening right now or going to be happening in the near future, and that's just getting the small snowball rolling. And I believe that Titusville is going to be capable of amazing things in the future, but we have to be open to not looking in the rearview mirror and looking at the road in front of us. And, um, we can't change those things that have happened, we can learn from them, but we have to go forward. And if we don't do that, we're, we're going to crash. And it's just, it's just a matter of time. And so we'll do our part to keep us going, but it's not just about the five people sitting up here and our City Hall employees, it's about everybody in this community looking at the road ahead and us all taking the journey together to make Titusville the best it can be. That's all, all right.
John?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things, I didn't write them down and prepare like Jay, but I would just like to say that, uh, the solicitor wasn't here to begin the year, and I apologize if it seemed like I was, I wasn't trying to argue about giving somebody more time, I thought that that was our intent at the beginning. I would just like to say that good things are happening. A little over two years ago, we started this journey to, uh, to fix things, and a group of people that got together said the best way to fix things, if you don't like that way they are, is get, get involved and make a difference. And sorry, Larry's going to miss this, but I, as much as there was a little tension here and there, I appreciate Larry coming, I, Larry, I appreciate your coming tonight. And, and here's one thing that came out of two years ago, we started discussing all this, because at that time, people were like, "We need to do this when you do that." Well, get involved and change. I encourage other people to get involved, change. What's interesting, to a positive about what Larry, the stuff Larry brought up tonight, every person sitting at this table tonight wasn't here two years ago. And we have an opportunity to set new courses and, and to expose things that shouldn't be there, to show that people know that we're going to make a difference. And I'm certainly committed, as much as, uh, my salary has not increased since I started, my hour certainly haven't, and I enjoy working with people up here, Danny and I were part of the two original, and, uh, and, but I appreciate you coming and, and talking to us tonight. Thank you.
My whole point was, you guys know it was in the rearview mirror, and now that you know, I'm with you, we're looking forward, so.
Sounds good, Larry.
I didn't know when you were aware of it, just tell me that.
All right, two things for the manager. Individuals are starting to go south now. If you could have a recommendation for us on Snowbird, on utility building, that's been on the back burner for about a month now. And the other is, have, have we had any correspondence with Mr. Dingren?
Nothing.
Those tracks, those tracks are getting worse. Like I said last time, I witnessed somebody fall on them. If the city solicitor has to send a certified letter, they need, they need to take it out. That's all. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.